Good afternoon, it is August twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three, it is now five-thirty P M. I ask the now-callers meeting to order and please rise in the invocation and pledge allegiance to
Father, all winter, spring, and summer, great of all seasons, without you and your grand design of nature, we would not have life. You're the architect of what has been and what always will be our paradise while on earth. Lord, please help us to be patient when a season seems too extreme for our comfort level. Let us be thankful, let us be thankful that much-needed projects can be completed during these severe days. God, as the heat of summer intensifies, let us be just as mindful of our neighbors as we were in the path of a hurricane. Let us pray for those without air conditioning and also those who are struggling to pay for electricity. For those fighting survive this summer, may you show us the resources to help them until another season. Through your teachings, he that serves you shall be blessed with food and water. Thank you, Lord, for your blessings. Bless this meeting today, all those present, as well as the lives of those we encounter afterwards, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Childs. We will now move to item three, motion finding that the advanced posting and notice requirements of Article eight point one-two-zero-two of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas, have been met in relation to all minutes impending ordinances and resolutions on this agenda, and that the reading of such items be confined into the captions as are agreed upon by the ordinances and resolutions. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Can we have a motion in a second, Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey? Okay, motion passes. On to item four, citizen comments. At this time, comments will be taken from the audience on any subject matter, whether or not that item is on the agenda. All comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes for each speaker. Your comments are appreciated. As the Texas Open Meetings Act does not allow the council to respond to items not listed on the agenda, your comments will be duly noted by the council and forwarded to the appropriate department for prompt consideration. A member of the audience that desires to speak during the city council's consideration of any specific agenda item is requested to notify staff prior to the start of the meeting. The first name that I have on my list is Dale Parrish. Please come forward, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
My father's Miracle Trust owns a property at nine-oh-nine Letcher Drive. There is a little sliver of land, triangle, and a yellow on that map, that is not owned by anyone. I'm told by adjacent landowners that it was formerly a church that was taken by the highway department when the freeway was put in the sixties, and that little sliver of land has never been claimed. Every time y'all have a turnover in personnel, I start getting bills for not mowing that piece of property that's not mine. And I'd like for y'all to instruct your code enforcement people that that's not my property and that's my responsibility to most. Every two or three years, I get fined with a letter like that one in the back saying y'all don't charge me for not mowing somebody else's property. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Parrish, I'm sorry, I know you have a map. Can you help me explain to me exactly? So, I see this item, what is this about?
This is inner road.
Oh, behind the old sign that used to say, "Holding the mustangs" or whatever?
I don't know what sign. So, there's a sign on property, but it's west of the Horstman store and east of the Fader State.
Thank you. Now I know where you're at. Okay, next we have Kevin Wallace.
Thank y'all. First, I want to thank you for your service to the city council. Unappreciated, honestly, in the city. So, I think y'all are all doing a great job, moving in the right path. So, why I'm here tonight is to talk about the water issue in Cypress Bow, just north of the interstate off Highway seven. Uh, we have two-hundred-and-fifty homes in the area. Mr. Childs lives real close to it. For about six months or so, we've had some very bad water issues. Water's very discolored. It's hit or miss houses, but it's constant, you know? We call, my wife calls, my neighbors call. The lady on the phone will say, "Well, this is the first we've heard about it." And they finally sent somebody up to my house about two weeks ago, and he just talked to me really, you know? And I said, "I can show you if you want me to," but I said, "Today is really not bad," you know? So, he told me he was just gonna go tell the supervisor or get, you know, dressed that way, but somebody called yesterday with a very bad issue. And the lady on the phone said, "This is the first we've heard about any issues in your neighborhood." And it just keeps going like that, you know? Somebody will come out to somebody's house and nothing gets done. Now, we've had the water pressure issue since June or something, and I understand what's going on with that. Y'all are replacing some stuff, and so that's gonna be an issue to fix, but the discoloration of the water is just very bad, you know? A really good friend of mine lives on Donwood Street. Night before last, she invaded her first grader, and that was his backwater. You know, when you, when you wash your hands, brush your teeth, take a shower, you don't really see it, you know? But when you fill up something, it does. And that, that's probably as bad as it gets that I've seen, but for since July in my house, it's been light yellow at best, you know, when you run backwater. So, I mean, you know, I don't want, you wash your clothes, bathe your kids, it's ruining plumbing fixtures. The hot water heaters are just getting tore up, you know? It's just horrible. So, I'm just, I'm just really here to make sure everybody's aware that we have a major problem in Cypress Bow, and just see if y'all can start helping us out a little bit more with it. I don't know what needs to be done, you know? But I just feel like the water department, you know, should help us out some. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Robbie Wimbley.
Uh, Robbie Wimbley, twelve-oh-eight Red Bull Drive, Orange, Texas. Uh, today, March fifth, city council meeting, and I've asked in person all those city council members to look into the justice, injustice that occurred to Ruby Wimbley's city of Orange water bills. As previously stated, a mistake was made, and an elderly citizen is looking for help from elected officials to fix the two exorbitant drafts taken from her bank account by the City of Orange Water Department. No matter who made the mistakes, the City of Orange is wrong in penalizing a citizen by drafting out of her bank account funds for water they know she didn't use. As a reminder, this Orange City Council gave its approval authorization in two thousand twenty-one. For D and A developments, beginning construction of the Little Cypress Grove subdivision was essentially the contractor. When the approval slash authorization was given in two thousand twenty-one by the Orange City Council to the contractor, they should have realized the only residents that could have been affected by this is Ruby Wimbley's residents. It is obvious the path of least resistance is to state that this occurred on the homeowner's side, and that the City of Orange is not responsible. During two, but during each of the two occurrences, there were at least three city Orange Water Department trucks present, so they were aware on two different occasions something affected the only residents that would be impacted by the construction of the Little Cypress Grove subdivision. At this point, I'm not sure what else I can say that hasn't already been stated in previous city council meetings or in the email distributions to the elected officials. After discussing this with Ruby Wimbley's family, I've decided it's now time for our grandchildren, great grandchildren, and other family members who are more works in communications through social media to pick up the torch and let them explore new and different ways to address this injustice as occurred to Ruby Wimbley. Also, I spoke to an old and dear friend this weekend, and he expressed a disappointment when he heard about this situation with my mother. He stated, "Robbie, as an elected official, we never treated the citizens of Orange, Texas like that." His photo is hanging in the entry. His name's Kevin Jordan. He was the mayor of Orange, Texas, and a city council member for several terms. And since I've got forty-four seconds, I'll let go of what he said. I live in Cypress Grove subdivision, I mean, uh, Cypress Valley, Alabama, and I live on Red Bull Drive, and he and my neighbors experiencing the same thing where the water's that way. And it's all phenomenal, and it's just, it might be good one day, and then, like you said, you fill up a big tub, it's bad. And, uh, and like you, the last time we, uh, changed out of water heater, not recently, he said that, uh, you know, it's probably something along those lines, so I echo what you said. So, thank y'all.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Okay, if not, I just wish that when y'all do citizen comments, you would allow us to, we cannot respond during citizen comments. If you would stay, I could tell you something, but if you keep leaving every time, it's on you. So, citizen comments are closed. On to city announcements. Mr. Coombs.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, as you may have seen, we've got a few fall and winter events coming up. Um, but what you may not know is we are actually going to do a pop-up event. And so, the pop-up event will be September sixteenth at Memorial Park, um, from four to six. It's a Saturday. In the evening, it'll feature a, uh, performance by Britt Goglin. We'll have an ice cream truck and yard games out there for adults or children. Um, it's not one of our super-big events. It's not a big festival, but it's just something for, uh, the entire community to come out, and of course, it's free. Um, just to enjoy in the evening together. We're hoping that weather cools off a little bit. Um, but it's just kind of the kickoff to our follow-ins, and we're hoping everybody would join us. Um, for any additional information, we'll have it on, we have it on the city website. Um, Allison has put it on both the city Facebook, the Explore Orange Facebook. We've got some stuff going up on the K W G T banner, and we've got some banners on Sunset Park and at Memorial Park itself, um, along Elven Road. Sixteen. So, if you have any questions about that, um, it is the start of the last three events for our calendar year, so we're hoping that everybody can join us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On to consent agenda items, number six. July twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three, Orange Economic Development Corporation meeting minutes, and the August eighth, two thousand twenty-three, regular city council meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey? Paid motion passes. Item seven, public hearing. Conduct a public hearing on the two thousand twenty-three annual action plan draft, year five of the five-year consolidated plan for community development block grant funds. Ms. Monson?
Yes, this is just the last public hearing for our two thousand twenty-three grant year annual action plan, and I did attach the funding letter, um, with that, just so you would see that we did get it.
Do we have any questions from the public? Any questions from council? Okay, great job. You didn't have no questions. You're doing good. All right, so we will close the public hearing. Thank you, Ms. Monson. Item eight, considering ordinance by the City of Orange, Texas, authorizing the settlement of the proposed funeral reconciliation of Intige Texas, finding that the meeting complies with the Open Meetings Act, making other findings and provisions related to the subject and declaring an effective date. First meeting was August eighth, two thousand twenty-three. Mr. Coombs?
Mayor and Council, good evening. You encapsulated that pretty well. Uh, again, he advised about all the law firm for us and many other entities, and they recommended this, um, this settlement.
Do we have any questions or comments from Mr. Coombs? I know we held off long enough, as much as we did, so, not as much as we came to protect the citizens. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Item nine, A, consider a resolution of the city council of the City of Orange, Texas, nominating Arlancio USA LLC to the Office of the Governor, Economic Development, and Tourism through the Economic Development Bank for designation as an enterprise project under the Texas Enterprise Zone Program, under the Texas Enterprise Zone Act, Chapter twenty-three oh-three, Texas Government Code Act. Mr. Train.
Yes, so Mayor and Council, we have two very special guests with us this evening. I'll introduce them in just a moment. But let me just kind of frame the discussion in terms of, as the jurisdiction of authority for all of our chemical row employers, of which Arlancio is a major employer, there's an opportunity for the major employers to consider submitting this Texas Enterprise Zone designation in the form of an application to make them eligible for state incentives that may be available. In this particular case, when Arlancio is considering doing its upgrades in terms of machinery and equipment to remain even more competitive in today's very competitive production environment. So, as a result of it, it's classified as more of a job retention effort, which is equally important to a job creation effort, because the last thing we want to do is lose a mayor, major employer on the chemical row or anywhere in the city and the area. So, there are job retention efforts that are available, and specifically working with tax incentive consulting firms, which most of them are based out of the Austin area for obvious reasons, because that's where the Governor's Office and Public Economic Development is located. And it gives us an opportunity to support that nominating resolution that becomes part of the application. It's pretty intense. The basic application is about thirty-two pages, and then there's a variety of attachments and supporting documents that go with our role as the jurisdiction of authority with Governor's Office of Economic Development is to support the application of the nominating resolution, of which you, as a mayor and council, have the authority to do that. So, we have two very important guests with us tonight. They're helping us move this project forward. First of all, we have the site manager for our Arlancio with us this evening, Mr. Jonathan Doyle, and then we have Mr. Jonathan Ferguson with Ryan Consulting out of Austin. So, I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to you first, Mr. Jonathan Doyle. Any comments you want to share on behalf of Arlancio, we welcome that. And then we'll turn it over to, uh, Mr. Ferguson in terms of representing consulting firms. So, if you don't mind, just step up.
Sure.
Thank you.
Well, hello, everybody. I'm Jonathan Doyle. I'm the site manager for Arlancio, and I'm, I'm not normally represented as an important guest, but it's my honor to be here, and thank you for, uh, putting Arlancio on the agenda. Uh, I believe this is actually maybe our, our third time of going through enterprise project, um, application process of this with the city, so thank you for all your, I don't know if it is, but in all the endeavors that we have. Uh, Arlancio has been here in the community under various names since nineteen sixty-five, a major employer. And me personally, under various names of the company, I've worked with the company about twenty, twenty-six, twenty-seven years. I hate to admit that all the time, but that's, that's the case. But we, we do, uh, have a considerable amount of investment, uh, in the, in the community. I mean, in this particular application, we're looking probably over a five-year period, somewhere around thirty million dollars in, uh, projects that are earmarked specifically as, uh, business improvement-type projects. So, these, uh, you know, have a variety of different, um, mechanisms towards business improvement, but, um, uh, they're all improving our competitiveness to, to state of business, and we are in a very competitive market. We, uh, we manufacture synthetic rubber. Uh, there's a lot of different pressures there, uh, both from imports, and we also make support from this region. So, um, we, we face, uh, you know, it seems like numerous challenges, and, and they, uh, uh, they change day to day. But, um, over the years, we've been very successful because we value our employees, uh, to a great deal. We want to be a safe employer, a good community citizen, um, and, uh, we see that as really our, our competitive strength, you know? Uh, because at the end of the day, the market values things that, uh, that provide value to the world as a whole, and we start with that right here in the community. So, uh, yeah, we, we haven't got thirty million dollars in improvement projects earmarked over this time, and in total, we typically invest maybe, uh, a hundred million dollars or so, a hundred and twenty million dollars over a five-year period when we look at all the projects that we undertake as, as a whole, you know? Two-hundred-and-forty, uh, direct Arlancio employees, and, uh, then we employ an additional one-hundred-and-fifty to two-hundred, uh, contract employees all the time. You know, that number, of course, increases during major, uh, government activities and projects such as this. So, uh, I'm happy to answer any questions if any, anybody has any for me, but, uh, just thank you for your time. Thank you for your consideration, and I appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Uh, as Mr. Train said, uh, my name is Jonathan Ferguson, um, with the consulting firm Ryan LLC at Boston. I have been assisting, um, Arlancio, um, through this program and, and other, um, incident programs here in the state and across the nation. Um, going back to when, you know, I'm in the links to staying essentially, uh, as far as my history goes with it. But, um, I'm here to answer any questions that y'all may have, uh, to get yourselves more familiar with what the Enterprise Zone Program is or how it works. But, uh, the main thing I think that I wanted to emphasize, um, and that most city councils are, uh, most concerned with is, uh, what the refund, uh, the benefit is of this program. And being a state-administered, uh, program for the Governor's Office, it is purely a, uh, state, uh, state refund. Um, there is no fiscal impact to the City of Orange, uh, or to the county, you know, any, um, any governing jurisdictions, um, where this site might be located. It's, it's purely a refund of the state portion of the sales tax paid on, um, goods and services used at the Orange site. So, um, just wanted to be clear about that, um, and any other questions you might have, um, feel free to let me know, and I can, I can answer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
So, Mayor, Mayor and Council, I'll, I'll turn it back over to you, but basically, we just take action as a governing body. Once we complete the supporting document from a resolution perspective, we forward it to Ryan Consulting. It becomes part of their application process, and we're going to meet the due date of September first for submitting this application for the next round of funding. But it is, as Mr. Ferguson said, strictly a state incentive that has no impact on the city whatsoever, except for the job retention component. As we know, the last thing we want in this community is the announcement of a closure of a major employer. So, in this case, we're supporting that effort. So, I'll turn it back over to you for action, Mayor.
Okay, do we have any questions or comments? Before we make a motion, I thought I just want to say thank you for coming, and thank you for being a wonderful neighbor here in the City of Orange, and giving people jobs and helping people supply for their needs for their families, and so definitely happy to support you in this endeavor. So, I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
We're all sick.
We have a motion second, third, fourth, fifth, and sixth. All right. Uh, Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Paid motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Train.
Thank you.
Item nine, B, consider a resolution of the city council of the City of Orange, Texas, conditionally approving a re-planned submitted by QT South LLC for the QuickTrip seventy-nine forty-four edition, being seven-point-zero-four-nine acres of land located in the Claymont West Survey, Abstract twenty-seven, located in Orange County, Texas, and being hall of a seven-point-zero-four-nine tractable land, as described in Document number five-zero-two-one-four-zero of the official public records of Orange County, Texas, being located in the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the City of Orange and providing for an effective date. Mr. Naugh?
Yes, this is the QuickTrip, uh, travel center that's going here down Highway sixty-two, just north of the Ruby County Truck Watch. And the Planning and Zoning Commission considered this model plan, uh, last night at the meeting, and diverted systems to zero to recommend that the city council conditionally approve, uh, the model plan upon all city ordinances being complied with.
You know, they're, they have those QuickTrip places all over the Carolinas, and they are very nice stores. Very nice. I'm forgetting one.
Yeah, that'd be nice. Everybody's mad about hardware, but now we got QuickTrip.
I'll make a motion.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Naugh. City manager report.
Mayor, Council, thanks. Uh, remember, uh, we're gonna have a, shall have a special call meeting next Tuesday before the twenty-ninth at five-thirty here in the council chambers regarding, uh, the tax rate and the first reading of the budget, first reading of the fourth budget. Uh, Monday, September fourth, that's late event, so the city, you know, it's gonna be a city holiday. And just a reminder, so that first regular council meeting will be September twelfth. Uh, and as we roll into September twelfth, if it doesn't cool off, no tides allow will be extended into no jive, no tides September. If it does cool off, we'll all be happy.
Do we get to vote on that?
It's mandated. All right, thank you, Mr. Coombs. City council, we're starting with Mr. Burge.
No report.
Ms. Henigan?
I do have one. I was contacted by Lindsay and Toby Pollak at nineteen-oh-eight Maple Avenue. They have a water leak. They have called. They just wanted us to be aware that they've called four times, all the way down the street. Their backyard and the neighbor's backyard is also flooded, so probably need some attention.
Hi, Ms. McKenna?
Number four.
Ms. Salter?
I have a little report. Uh, first, I want to thank everybody for coming, and I want to encourage people who have little animals or know people that have animals, please make sure they have shade, water, and, uh, so, I'm pretty big on that with animals, for babies. Um, Just a Little Help, uh, has partnered with Southeast Texas Food Bank. Um, a lot of times I'm involved in the food distributions. There will be one. So, I want people of Orange to come out, uh, Thursday at the Riverside Pavilion at seven-oh-eight Simmons Drive, uh, to come from one to three. So, if you spread the word, that people know that that is occurring. And, uh, and there's also another great event that I heard about, um, at Saint James Missionary Baptist Church. It's something called Men Who Cook. So, twenty-five men have come together, and they are cooking, and want people in the City of Orange to come out and taste the food. Uh, I think it's like a twenty-five-dollar fee though to go in, but it's twenty-five guys, and they're, I think, each guy's preparing like two meals, and it is a fundraiser to give back to the children in the community of Orange. They are doing this as a fundraiser, all these men, to buy things and also to give a scholarship to, uh, to, I think, to two, um, students, Little Cypress and West Orange. So, I think that's a great, great thing that they're doing. So, please come out and try to support them. The address is five-oh-five North Fifteenth Street. It's the old administration building, the old West Orange, um, right by the rec, rec, uh, recreation location. So, for further details, you can call four-zero-nine-seven-seven-nine-eight-eight-seven-eight, under the, um, direction of Pastor Hardy O'Neill. So, it's called Men Who Cook. And these are the men from the Golden Triangle area coming, and so, you great men, if y'all know how to cook, next year, please get involved in this great thing.
Thank you. Mr. Childs?
Uh, I believe Mr. Wallace covered my report, other than I want to add that council members are not exempt from the Orange water. Um, if there's a way that we can push out, uh, through Allison on the city page, and we're flushing a line, that way it's easier for council members to say, "This is what's going on in your neighborhood this week." It would just be, you helped me out a couple of weeks ago, Mike. I appreciate that. It was one, one post, and we were able to just all push it out. But again, council members are not exempt from the Orange water.
Okay, Mr. Bailey?
No report.
The report. All right, and I will close by saying thank you for those who are here tonight. Um, we've been here a long, we've been here a long time, and a lot of things have changed, and a lot of things are happening. I'm never, I'm never gonna get upset when people have issues. That's what you're supposed to come here for. Um, I just want you to, people understand that your issue, which is the most important thing in the world to you, is one of nineteen thousand issues every day. Um, and so, I don't know how we do it, but I will say this, uh, before the next meeting, when we have our agenda, I would like to ask city staff to please put the, uh, the Wimbley issue on the agenda so we can talk about it. One of the things that we continuously brought up, and we've, we've heard from him, because he said it's his fifth time coming, is he wants to hear more. Well, if you have a council member that is over your area, it does not take more than that council member or the respective at-large members to work with you to fix your issue. If that person has not worked with you to fix that issue, then you need to take that up with that council member, as we continue to work forward. Like, each one of us has an area, and some of us cover the whole city. But it, but for you to keep coming in, and we, we want to talk with you, you have to stay, or else I have to put it on the agenda. So, put it on the agenda so we can talk about it, and I want the public to understand that this is not one leak that has only happened to one person in the last one-hundred-and-eighty-six years of the city. This happens all the time, and other people have to pay their bill when there's a lot of leaks and there's an overage. So, we're not doing people bad. I don't know what someone ever did before me. It's always easy to say I would have never done that if you're not in this chair. this chair at this time. However, we do care. Whoever, whichever one of us is directly responsible for that area, please contact them this week. I want it on the agenda for the next time. If we decide as a council to reimburse them, if anybody else comes up and it ends up being that way from now on to where we start reimbursing people even though it's never been done before, then oh, well, that's for all of us to decide, not for one person. What used to happen for the last hundred and eighty-five years, sometimes things change. But I don't, I don't want to take fault for something that may have happened that we don't all have something to do with, right? So let's work together, put it on the agenda, let's talk about it, and let's see how we can fix this issue moving forward. With that being said, I appreciate you all once again. Thank you for your hard work and dedication, each and every one of you, and with that, we have a motion to adjourn.
Vote second.
Vote in second, third, and fourth. All in favor, say aye. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.